Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. Okay, we're back today. If you want to phone in, the number's 712-224-4996. We will not have a meeting next week. We will be back and open to the public on July 6th, I believe is that date. So if you want to call in on any item, please do so. Remember to state your name and address for the record, and remember that you have three minutes. Today's agenda consists of... The consent agenda consists of 2 through 12C, and I will move that.
Second.
Two is a reading of the City Council minutes of June 15, 2020. Three is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the annual sidewalk program. Four is a resolution awarding a purchase order to HICAM for coagulant for the water treatment plant. Five are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a body or bulletproof vest partnership body armor safety initiative grant. B is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept a JAG program grant for the tri-state drug task force. C is a resolution accepting a grant agreement with HUD for the continuum care planning funds. D is a resolution authorizing the utility department to apply for an EPA grant to conduct an anaerobic digestive algae study at the wastewater treatment plant. Six are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution adopting a health reimbursement arrangement plan. That's an HRA, right?
Yes.
Don't you have to have a high deductible to have an HRA?
No, we've worked with... We've been working with Gallagher, and they've identified this as a plan. Alls it is, is it's the equivalent of like a 401K, however, the money can only be used for retiree health.
Okay. There's a real H... Well, I'd be at HSA. This is an HRA, okay. B is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services from South Sioux City. C is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with Sergeant Luff. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to sue contractors for the airport tenant improvement project. E is a resolution consenting to the Estoppel certificate for the sale of property at 3112 Floyd Boulevard. F is a resolution approving a contract to H&R Construction for the Lewis and Clark Park ticket office building replacement project. Go ahead.
Just for item G.
Item G.
Your what, G?
Yeah.
Oh. G is a resolution approving a renewal option, number one, to the contract for Meyer Towing and for towing and wrecking.
Mayor and Council, Justin Vondrack, 1288 Lincoln Street, Southwest, Lamar's, Iowa. I represent Stockton Towing. And part of the reason that I'm here is we believe there are some deficiencies that Meyer is not meeting in their contract. One being that 90% of the calls are handled within the first 20 minutes. And then, number two, that we don't believe their drivers are rec masters certified as required in the contract. And so if I am wrong in those two elements, please let me know, and Stockton will step aside. But if Myers is going to bid the contract this low, we want to make sure that they are meeting all the elements of the contract.
Pretty hard to hear, the gentleman.
Yes, it is.
Can you make your two points up here? Can you come up here by the...
That is entirely up to you.
By the speaker? Or by the phone?
Right here.
Right there.
Right here.
That's where the...
Just go through your two points again.
So my two points briefly are that we want to make sure that Meyer is abiding by the contract. And one of the main important issues in that contract is that 90% of the calls have to be handled within 20 minutes. The second...
Sir, could you repeat your name again? I don't think Alex and I could hear.
No problem. Justin Vondrack, 1288 Lincoln Street, Southwest, Lamar's, Iowa.
Oh, hi, Justin.
Hi. I represent Stockton Towing. And again, to get to my second point, is one of the elements in the contract is that all of the drivers who handle these calls are rec masters certified. I've personally done a search with my client in the five-state region of all the rec master classes, and I have yet to see a Stockton driver on one of those certifications.
You mean Meyer?
A Meyer driver.
A Meyer driver. I'm sorry, Alex. Thank you.
If you're wrong on those two points, you said Stockton will step aside.
The point being is that Myers has really been very aggressive in bidding this contract. And if they're going to be that aggressive, we want to make sure that they're upholding to the elements of the contract. Otherwise, my client would be an eligible bidder, not at the price that Myers has bid it. And so if they're going to bid at this low, we want to make sure they're upholding to the standards of the contract.
This is something... This is Jubilee. This is something that I was contacted by from a relative of Stockton Towing. And they were asking that they be allowed to bid the contract again this year. My response to that was I did some due diligence, and the original contract was put out for bidding in 2017, and Stockton was invited to bid, and they chose not to at that time. The contract is a three-year contract that expires June 30th of this year, and then it has an option, two one-year options. And the city is exercising its right to opt on one of the first years. So that's where we're at right now. It seems as though the police department is very satisfied with their response rate, et cetera, which is why they're opting to go for the second, or the first of the second years. So I'm not sure about the certification, and we can check into that.
Hi, Lisa Clayes, Captain with Sioux City Police Department. That's correct. We are very happy with Myers at this time, have no problems whatsoever with their response time. And I will look into the certification, but this is the first I've ever heard about anything. Jeff Day has always been very responsive, and I know that I've never had a problem with any of his drivers not being certified. I am concerned that in 2017, Stockton chose not to bid the contract. They led us to believe that they were going to submit a bid, and they chose not to. And I think that's the reason that Myers bid so low. They actually cut most of their rates in half just to get the bid.
I thought there was a... I thought there was another reason that came to the... That was in a memo to council about the other bidder didn't have a place to put the cars, or...
That's what his reason for not bidding was.
No, because he actually...
An impound lot, I think, was lacking.
At that time, he had a yard, so I don't know what that argument... That isn't what he said to me on when...
That might have been a prior bid, but the last bid, they chose not to bid at all.
Yeah, they chose not to bid at all.
They chose not to bid.
Yes, they did. They did not bid in 2017.
Correct.
Oh, that could have been an earlier bid, even prior to 2017. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, they came in and spoke to us on a couple of occasions, and led us to believe that they were going to submit a bid, and then chose not to. I was surprised.
Do you know, is it in the contract that says they have to be certified for those two elements?
Yes, exactly it does. And Jeff has always been responsive. I will check to verify that everybody is. I'll ask him for the certification, but I have no reason to believe that they aren't.
What about the time limits?
We don't have any problems. I get a monthly report from... On their response times from Wendy Hess from the communications center, and so I keep track of all their responses. I haven't had an issue.
Thank you.
No complaints.
Thanks.
So, Justin, it seems like the first points answered on the response time.
My reason for the first point is that my client has received calls from the police department or specific officers that say sometimes they're waiting out there a long time for a Myers truck. That would be the basis for that.
And three points.
So if we have some numbers that say that 92% of the time that they're within 20 minutes, I'm... The contract states that they have to be there 90% of the time within 20 minutes. My client is getting calls from specific police officers saying, "If you guys are close, come work it out with these people, because we've been waiting there a long time."
That is indicative in the report that I...
I would say too, Justin, I have not talked with my contact at Meyer Towing. I want to circle back before this, and I just didn't get an opportunity to. I know early on in the contract, one of the frustrations that they had is they did aggressively bid this. As you said, I think the rates are low. They were aggressive in their bid. But then what they were running into is they weren't even getting the volume of calls that they should have, because they felt that Stockton Towing was basically being aggressive and going after or contacting law enforcement, saying, "Oh, well, we're right here. We'll just do that. Oh, well, we'll take that. We'll take care of this. We'll do this." And that law enforcement were allowing them to hook up to different wrecks and do that without giving them the time necessary. And so they were frustrated that it's like, "We went to bid this aggressively if we're not going to get the volume of calls." And so I know at one point in time, and it was early on in the contract when I was discussing this with the party from Meyer Towing, but that was some of the frustration they felt too, was that it was almost like... And I don't think that they ever used this language, and I don't want to put words in our mouth, but it was similar. They were basically like, you know, squad car chasing and just kind of watching wherever the wrecks are listening to the scanners. And so I know that that was an issue in the past, but... And I don't know if it was the officers reaching out or not, but if Captain Clayes is happy with their service so far, I mean, I understand we can look into their certification, but I think that that year extension and then just putting them on notice, if we would like to put it out to bid or something after this year extension, then we can go that route too. But I just wanted you to, Justin, you to be aware of things that I'm hearing on the other side of it, as far as if they're saying, "Oh, well, we were waiting." Well, I'm hearing that Stockton trucks are at times doing that. And I have nothing against Stockton. I'm just saying what I've heard.
Council, we have a citizen who was called in.
Yeah, what? On this item? Okay.
Sir, could you please state your name and your address?
Yeah, it's going to be Tristan Vander Schaaf, 2223 West Big Street. Julie, I was just... I'm the one that emailed you. I actually have a brother that works for Stockton Towing. And I just wanted to point out, so the contract is actually up, and I guess... So is it two one-year extensions on that contract? Is that what's right here?
Yes.
Okay, well, two one-year extensions. I guess this for me, you know, my brother's worked for Stockton since they opened. You know, they have highly trained people, you know, that are always on time to their calls. Law enforcement's top priority in all situations. And, you know, what really irritates me is that the council is going to try to take the easy way out and just go ahead with the 5-0 sweep on the vote. And I emailed Julie, and Julie, I appreciate your email back. But it really... I think that this thing needs to be put back up for bid. I mean, I guess the response times are important as far as when you're speaking in terms of law enforcement. Obviously, when there's a wreck on the road or anywhere in this instance, you want to get your law enforcement out as soon as possible from that wreck. And I mean, if you do math on that, if you have an officer waiting on scene for an hour or two truck, times 365 days, that's 365 hours of time that police department could be spending on more prioritized calls. You know, I guess there's two big companies in town. You got Stockton, and you got Myers. And they're both great companies, but I think both should have the fair opportunity to have this thing go up to bid and rebid it the way it should be. I get you guys say that, you know, it's bid it cheaper. No, sometimes bid it cheap, you don't get quality work. And I get, you know, Bob, I know that you're a businessman. You know that. Sometimes the lowest bidder isn't the best quality of work. And I think that's where this thing's getting to, is you got someone bidding this thing so low, and they're not taking it seriously. And I guess it's just really irritating. So I guess that's all I need to say. Hopefully, hopefully this thing goes up for bid, and we can get a good tow company in there. And even if this thing was on rotation, perfect. I mean, I think you wouldn't have a company that's so burnt out this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, will you send us...
But just so I'm clear, I just want to ask it again, just so I'm clear the way I'm voting, is... Or just so I have all the information, I heard you correctly. I understand that Justin is saying that he has a lot of concerns with the time that he's heard that. And I understand the gentleman calling is saying that he's hearing a lot about delayed times and unhappy with service, and so that's why he thinks it should go out for bid. But what I'm hearing from Lisa, that it is going well, and there haven't been concerns about time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have any complaints at all?
We get complaints from both sides. So I... We've had issues with, for instance, I think there's some officers that are friends with some people that work at Stockton. And we had a situation where officers actually had called Stockton to tow vehicles off the street, which is against the contract, so we had to deal with that. So... Or officers that abdicated their role to other places like the Hard Rock after they had signs up for the tow. So we had issues like that. We had complaints. I've gotten complaints from Myers about Stockton jumping accident calls and those things. So... But we... In terms of the time response, we don't have it. I know that the city manager just looked up that Bob or that Jeff Day is actually a master wrecker, so I think that allows him to do some of the training himself without having to send them to other places. So I'll verify all that and get it to you, but I can't... It's just hard for me to believe, because we usually get all of that, and they're covered by insurance. They've done everything that we've asked of them, and I have no issues.
You'll confirm that for the...
I will confirm that, exactly. I can confirm that.
I don't... I was disappointed when Stockton didn't bid the last time. Now, all of a sudden, they come in at the last minute, I'm sorry, and say... And throw these kind of questions up. I don't have an answer for you, but it would certainly be a lot easier for me to say we should bid this contract. But they came last time and said that, and then didn't bid. Didn't even put a bid in. I don't understand that.
Exactly.
Did we know why they didn't bid?
I do not know why. When I called to ask why he didn't submit a bid, I had a... He laughed and said, asked me what Myers bid, and I told him, and he said, "Well, that should put him out of business. I don't know how anybody can keep a company open at that rate." That was kind of disappointing.
Justin, I don't think that you were representing them then, but do you know why they wouldn't have bid?
Julie, I believe that there... I did speak with my client about that, and he had heard a rumor of what Myers was going to bid. Coupled that with...
Oh.
And coupled that with the fact that his yard at that time probably wasn't satisfactory, gave him cause to say, "I'm not going to buy a new yard, create a whole new city tow yard, just to be outbid by that kind of money." And so that's the only reason that we're here today, is to make sure that if Myers is going to bid that low rate, that they abide by all the provisions in the contract. And if they're doing that, and they're able to continue, then it's only...
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. H is a resolution approving a 2080 agreement for the Plywood Trail Foundation for Management of the Sioux City segment of the Plywood Trail. I is a resolution approving change orders number two and three to the contract with Knife River for the annual resurfacing project. Pete and Alex, you're on that committee. If you read this, you went to bid without even knowing the manholes that needed to be rebuilt. And the reason they say that is, well, we wanted to make sure we got a bid. But that's a lot of change orders for a small project. I mean, that street's out of that 100, what, million age, probably not even 400, 500,000 bucks, and you got a $97,000 change order. Somebody needs to ask the engineering department, why in the heck you didn't survey those manholes before you bid this project? And if it meant putting it off for another three or four or five weeks, that's what they should have done, because the change order is the contractor's best friend. J is a resolution approving a change order number four to the contract for Knife River for the modifications of the runway 1735 reconstruction and ship project at the airport. Actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to MT Mechanical for the Skywalk Renovations Project. B is the resolution authorizing payment to KP Construction for the emergency paving repair project. Eight are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the underground electrical easement, announcing the intent to accept the proposal to Mid-American, scheduling a hearing for the property at 101 and 1/2 Pier Street. B is a resolution inviting proposals for the underground electric easements, announcing intent to sell, accept the proposal of Mid-American, and scheduling a hearing for property at 220 Pier Street and 225 Pier Street. Nine are approving total payments for May of 2020. Ten are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list. Come forward if you have any questions. Eleven are applications for beer, liquor licenses. See the list. Come forward if you have any questions. Twelve are reset amendments. See the list. Come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Call the roll, please.
So, excuse me. What did we decide on Meyer Towing?
It stays in unless somebody asks to move it out.
I...
Yes, it will be voted on as part of the consent agenda.
Were... Lisa's not... Captain Clayes is not going to verify the...
Lisa's going to make sure they are, is what...
Okay. And if they're not, then she'll...
So, but Mayor, after that, I'm just... After we make an action today, it's going to be for another year, even if they're not meeting the commitments.
No, because they're in violation of the contract. If you don't comply with the terms of the contract, then you're in violation, so you don't have a contract. I'm practicing law here, but I shouldn't do in front of all these distinguished attorneys, but...
I'll defer to the city attorney. But I believe there would be...
If you're in violation of a contract, you don't longer have a contract.
Then there'd be a 30-day right of redemption.
Well, they should have a 30 days. They... You brought it here today. They should have 30 days to make the correction if that...
Yeah, an action needs to be taken today, because the contract expires June 30th. We do not have another meeting until July 6th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
On item 10A7, I need to abstain on that one.
Sioux City Country Club?
Right.
Okay, about that.
Thank you. I don't know if I should abstain on this, but I own such a small percentage, like you'd own it rather than me, so we can figure out if we sign that over someday.
Are we ready?
Next capital call comes, I'm going to talk to you. Yeah?
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Thirteen is a resolution approving the final plat of Clem's Edition, Woodbury County, Iowa, at 1858 Glen Ellen Road. The petition is out, Fagan. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Mr. Han?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I just wanted to report, as noted in the staff report, we have received the signed voluntary annexation agreement today, and so we're ready to move forward with approval.
And Council, Mr. Daniels is the attorney for the owners, and he said if you had any questions, available for a phone call.
Who's that?
John Daniels is the attorney for the owner. So he said if you had any questions about this item, we could...
That's nice, Mr. Daniels. John, we very much appreciate his... Class 67 East High School. Call it.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Hearing and resolutions. Hearing and resolution authorizing the loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of water revenue capital loan notes. I'll move that. The hearing is open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Fifteen is an ordinance amending Chapter 5.20 of Solid Waste Municipal Code to Increase the Fees of Solid Waste Collections. First consideration approved June 8th. Second passed on June 15th. I'll move third reading.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Sixteen is a resolution approving the first five-year extension on the promissory note and loan issued to Green Valley Floyd Golf Corporation. I'd like to make a motion to defer this item to July 6th, so we can get some additional information put together.
Second.
Waters?
See if that's...
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang on, we got a phone call, please.
It's not for this item.
Oh, go ahead. Call the roll, then.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Seventeen is a resolution approving a strategic health services contract with St. Luke's for strategic health services. I'll move that. Second. Go ahead.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Eighteen is a resolution approving a service provider agreement with LifeScan Wellness Centers for Strategic Health Services. I'll move it. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Lisa, could I ask you back on item 14? Did you get all five of us?
On 14?
On item, yeah. Agenda item 14.
I do believe so. The hearing and resolution loan...
You got the mayor's vote? Because on 15, you started off with the mayor. So that means you started off twice with him.
She does that. That's why I... Yeah, we're watching you. But you have all five.
I believe I do.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to make sure on that 10 million.
I'll re-listen and make...
They're taking it... They're doing a study to see how many millions of dollars I've put the city in debt over the years. So we have somebody calling in?
Yeah.
We have somebody. Okay. What's that? Well, yeah, I think we have.
Well, I want to speak to any citizens' concerns.
Yep, you're on with the council now. Please state your name and your address.
All right. Steve LeWan, 4714 Crexenville Road. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about. I had called in on the, I believe it to be the April 6th meeting, and that's when the council had approved, had approved the overlay project for Crexenville Road. And at that time, I kind of voiced some concerns about how I was going to hold up with some of the traffic that comes back going down through here. And I know, after kind of discussing a little bit, I know you, Mr. Mayor, said that you didn't think it was such a bad idea to maybe place an embargo on Crexenville Road. I guess I'm just wondering if you still feel that way, and if there's been any action taken towards doing that. If so, where do we stand? If not, I guess I'd like to know how to proceed on this, to make that happen.
Nothing's been done on that, but I guess we can certainly have the engineering department. I wouldn't be opposed to that. I don't think big semis should be driving on that. There isn't any reason to. They can act... There's no reason... Nothing to deliver out there. So I don't... I don't know.
I'll be honest with you. I couldn't really understand anything the gentleman was saying. Can someone just give me a summary?
The question is, can we embargo Crexenville Road out there past Green Avenue? There really isn't a reason for semis to be driving out there to begin with. And the road is not that... It's still that old highway spec. That's the old original Highway 20. It's not very wide. And so I think the city has the right, do they not, Amber, to embargo a road if we choose to?
I'm not sure, Mayor, I'd have...
Well, it's not a state road anymore, so I think we can. We'll do... Steve, we'll do some research. Do they have your phone number?
No. Do we have his number?
Okay.
Mayor, could it... Is it trucks other than grain...
Mayor, could it, um, is it trucks other than grain, you know, egg trucks? Is it just trucks all year round, or is it trucks hauling grain possibly?
Well, you can even embargo them, they oughta go down to Highway twenty if they're hauling grain, they shouldn't be going through that residential neighborhood anyway.
I know there's, like, weight limits and things like that that are...
Right.
I, when it is farm-to-market time, so I just was wondering if it had anything to do with that, or if this is just all year round, you know, excessive semi traffic.
Don't know the answer, but...
Mayor and Council, I have staff contacting them to start the process.
Okay, we'll, we'll get the, we'll get a report on it, Julie.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Mr. LeWan, did you hear that?
Yeah, there's no reason to have trucks out there by bacon creek.
I agree, that'd just ruin that road.
Wide.
You're, you're a little delayed, what you're listening to is a little delayed, they're going to have someone from engineering reach out to you. Yes, yes. 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 Thank, all right, thank you, sir, have a good day. Bye.
Other one?
Um, yes, I'm Mr. Adrian Roy.
Oh. We put that speed sign back up there, I saw that, right?
On Correctionville Road?
On Indian Hills.
Oh, yeah, there are, oh, I haven't seen the...
I think it went back up, I think.
Did it? It wasn't recently, last few days, I didn't see it.
I'm gonna be putting you on live with the council.
Should I, are you, I called?
Yes, please state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Adrian Roy, my address is thirty-six forty-one Dupont Street, here in Sioux City.
Okay, go ahead, you're live with council.
Okay, I called, I think, two weeks, maybe three weeks ago, and told you folks, as you know, that Indian Hills Speedway here is very, very traffic-heavy, and it's very, very speed demon-heavy, and I'm calling this time, does anybody on the panel have any idea what I should do, other than call you folks to get, uh, some of this taken care of? A, a police car went by today, and he could not compete, if they were racing, he would not win a race with probably forty percent of these vehicles that go by my house, our house, and our neighbors' houses, and, uh, it's kind of like, we've lived here many years, and, like I said last time around, it's been added on to, on the west side, on the east side in particular, and it's a thorough, it's a main thoroughfare, what should I do? What would you guys do? I know what I wanna do, but the law prohibits it, so, what do I do?
Adrian, is that digital speed sign been put back up? On Indian Hills Drive? Can you ask that?
I think maybe you were answering, I, I'm, my hearing is up in left field somewhere, so I, I don't know what you said, but I, I can tell you, I suggested last time around, putting up the, the, uh, speed indicators, and, and somebody, as we were done talking last time around, I believe it was a female voice, I don't know, was on the panel, or somebody in the chambers there, said, gee, I thought it was forty-five miles an hour up there on Indian Hills, and it was kind of like, uh-oh, should've had the microphone off, but I think a lot of people must think, it's a thirty mile an hour zone, this whole stretch here, and I, I just, it's, I told my wife I was gonna call, I, I, I know I, I get to blabbering times, but it's very frustrating, and it's just car after car after car, we try to sit outside and enjoy the nice weather, and it's just so frustrating, one after another after another, and I, I want you folks to do so, I told you last time I called, I was gonna hold you responsible, well, as far as I know, you're as high as it goes here in the city, you got the brains, you got the power, you got the money, and, what sticks out in my mind, the last meeting, I believe, that I listened to, and a little bit today, you're talking about a, a walking bridge across the Missouri River to bring tourists here, and I think, me and my neighbors and all of this city, I think, I think the price tag was like fifty million plus on a walking bridge, spend the same money, get some signs up here, get more, oh, there was a policeman up here today, my wife and I walk almost every day up in this neighborhood, there was a policeman, he sat here, probably, we saw him, maybe five minutes, caught somebody, I don't know if he gave a ticket, chased him down, and he was gone, he was gone. You wanna, you wanna build your walking bridge, post a cop here, take the revenue from what they get from speeders and build your bridge, that's all I got, thank you for listening.
Thank you. I don't, I don't recall seeing a digital sign.
Maybe not, I drove...
Yeah, I didn't see it either the last time. How, how much are those?
I didn't, I explained that.
Could you? We need a few.
Well, and I know that we have, like, the ones that post on a pole up here at Morningside Avenue, what I wondered is, where the one that is on the trailer, 'cause there's one that's on a trailer that they can move around, and I don't know where that one is, or that one could be utilized.
They move, they move all up there or not.
But it's, I'd often wonder, I understand that we have limited officers, but it was almost, it would be nice to at least have them report to the council, you know, didn't, did they increase officer presence up there, could someone just sit there at the peak hours and run radar for two hours and see what they come up with, at least so we would have some reply to the gentleman, and say, we had an officer run radar up there for two days in a row, for two hours at the peak time, and these were the speeds that people came back with, these were the tickets that were issued. I don't understand, I, I would think that we would have the resources, I understand there are higher, um, priority calls, sometimes they come in in different districts, I, I am, I would defer to Councilmember Greckin, he would know it much better, more than I would, but I would imagine we'd be able to have someone from traffic at least go up and do that.
There is a, Alex, there is a, uh, traffic unit, the step unit, I think Sergeant Jim Clark is the supervisor, you know, one of the, so, they can, and that's typically what they have done in the past, they look at the complaints, and then they target areas that, uh, the concerns are expressed, uh, to the police department, and, in this case, the city council. One of the problems in this location, if, if you've been through it, you're familiar with it, on both ends, east and west, about a block away from where Mr. Roy lives, it's straight downhill, and it's, there are two signs posted in the block prior to where he lives, well, actually, the one might be right across the street from his house, it says thirty miles an hour, there are two red flags on each sign, you can't miss it, but I've been through there quite a bit since he talked a couple weeks ago, and, and I'm just eyeballing it, but, they do come.
Oh, yeah.
They're going pretty quick, so, enforcement is really, um, a good start, Alex, and, and I like the idea of maybe getting the report from the PD to get in, you know, let us know how much time they're spending there, how many citations, I don't think it would take long to, uh, to having an impact on it, but the other thing is, because they're coming from the east and the west, and then they start down that hill, I think there needs to be signs in a block even, you know, something that says, we're running radar, we're, uh, we got digital signs down there, or, or something, because I think people start down that hill, and I don't know about the rest of you, but when you go down a hill, you're not really careful, the speed can bump up five, ten real quick, I don't think any, I'd like to think it's not being done intentionally, but, but I do, I do agree with Mr. Roy, I think there's a problem there.
I thought we were getting the speed signs out there, though, so let's give that, let's give that... The only way you're gonna change behavior is to write tickets, you cannot...
I was just going to say that, Mayor, what about a red flag camera, or someone out there with some radar?
It's time you set radar and bang them with a ticket.
Yeah, people need, people...
You're, you're, you go down that hill, you don't pay attention, I was there the other day doing thirty-seven, and I was thinking about it, and, you gotta just, so. Go ahead, we've been preoccupied with some other things.
I know.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Please state your name and address, and then you can address council.
Helen Jan, fourteen fifteen Burton Street.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I wanna say hi to Bob Danmore and the rest of you, um, I live over on Burton Street, and I think Bob is familiar with this area and, um, the property issue we have here, and I am just wanting some help in trying to get this straightened around. Um, I've been here for forty-one years, and I have been working off and on and trying to get this straightened, and I get frustrated, and I try to give up on it, but, you know, I'm not getting any younger, and neither are you guys, and you guys are gonna be gone soon, and I will too, but I'd sure like to get this resolved, um, so I can figure out what I wanna do here in the next few years with the property, the big thing is, I would like to build a garage.
It's out on Burton Street, and the problem is, that no pins out there mean anything, and the city's just walked away back, and we paid somebody back in the nineties to straighten that mess out when we went to do, uh, the housing out there.
Woodbury Heights.
Woodbury Heights, and alls they did was set the pins for Woodbury Heights of the city property, and left all the rest of the neighbors hanging out there, and so you've got streets...
Oh.
You've got streets where driveways are, you've got driveways where streets are, you've got this neighbor saying it's their property, you've got that neighbor, you've got houses, nobody can borrow money without, I suppose mortgage insurance is the only way you get it done. And I don't know the answer, Bob, I've asked Nicole about it, and she just...
Vacate, vacate and replat, Highland Park.
Yeah.
Vacate and replat, right, Amber?
I will defer to the real estate attorney on that.
We need to vacate it and replat it, but how do we do that, you've still got, you're gonna have a fistfight when you do it.
Oh, it's gonna be a big battle, but it has to be done.
Well, who's gonna do that?
City. City plan...
Well...
I'd work with Jeff Hanson on it to get it done.
You got her phone number, right?
Yes.
I would like her, I've asked for a report, how do we get this solved, because it's just not fair to people that live out there, that they, they shouldn't live under cloud of title on their house that they've lived at forty years and think they own, and, and find out, no, you, that's not really your...
How big an area are you talking?
Oh, gosh, I suppose, three blocks wide, and six blocks long.
Thing of it is...
What's that, Helen?
The thing of it is, is, I feel that I'm just a home buyer in this, and when I bought the home and got all the papers on it and everything, I took it as this was my property, and, and that was that, but, um, not until probably about five years into living here, when we tried to get, get a building permit, they never allowed it.
We gonna construct a garage?
Yeah.
But you can't, 'cause now our neighbor says that's their ground.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a plat out there that shows the lots and the location of the streets, but the problem is, as the mayor pointed out, we have garages in streets, we have streets going through houses, and what needs to be done is, is to try to put back into place what all of the owners originally had in the plating, so in other words, if you had a lot that was...
You know...
Two hundred feet by four hundred feet, then, then you get a lot that's two hundred feet by four hundred feet, but your house and garage will be...
I can't build a garage, um...
Will be on it.
Others also are saying that my driveway into my property belongs to them, um, I, we need to do something with it.
And, and we can do it in phases, too.
What I want is some lines put up, and, and my property shows where my lines are.
Helen, let's, let's...
Lines are from there over.
Dan.
But I don't feel it should also be on to me, because I look at it as...
Is different than...
Somewhere down the line, somebody okayed to put a street through here, and somebody okayed to give out building permits to build all these homes here, so, it's gotta go back way back when, and I don't feel it's, it's something that I need to be paying out of pocket for, for any of this.
Tell her we're gonna get a report on what a plat, what'd you say it was, Dan?
A vacation and a replating.
A vacation and replating, we'll get a report on how we can do that, and we'll get that within a month. Bob, Jeff's a little bit familiar.
I've taken, I've taken you off speakerphone.
Yeah, I know, his dad's real familiar with it, 'cause that's where it started, way back then, it did with Jerry. Yeah.
On Burton Street, and Burton Street, wasn't that repaved, and wasn't that improved?
Partial.
Not all the way through to, okay.
But we, it didn't matter, we just overlaid the existing...
Like we do, okay.
Yeah.
So, they do have the lot that they bought, if they have Lot Nine in Highland Park, they own Lot Nine, the problem is, the house might be somewhere else, I mean, it'd be off Lot Nine, or a garage.
Oh, it's terrible, the street that runs through there is really on private property.
Yeah. How does it get so messed up if they have a legal description for this?
Because there was, where two deals came together, and they never married him.
Uh, Mr. Roy would like a call back.
Oh, the Dupont, Dupont Street.
I'll put you on with council again. With council, just right now, okay? Yep. Mr. Roy?
Yes?
Okay, you're live with council again.
Okay, so, watch my speech, right? Anyway, this is just a follow-up, I wanted to call you folks back, and thank you very much for showing that you're aware of the problem up there, in particular Pete, thank you for your comments, I will leave you folks alone now, you are much smarter and able than I am to handle this, and I assure you folks that I will not call you back until I have something positive to tell you as an outcome of your actions, so, thank you for listening to me both times today, and God bless America.
All right, buddy.
Thanks, Mr. Roy.
Is that it?
Counsel concerned.
Pete, um, I had a gentleman call me at home, and he told me that, uh, he switched service providers from, uh, Cable One to long lines, but now he can't get YouTube, no, he can't, he's, he, he was hoping, he likes to watch council meetings, but he said long lines told him when he called them back, that the city wouldn't give them permission to show, but, so I don't understand.
I could look into that, but as far as I know, we've never been contacted by long lines for the cable broadcast, I will say, our connection is a direct connection to Sparklight.
Yes.
Um, but you can watch on the internet, going through YouTube, just go to YouTube and Google, or...
Unfortunately, this gentleman doesn't have a computer, but...
So, I'm not sure what, what his options would be.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if, uh, long lines had a provision, I mean, if the city was able to give them permission, they could...
It's just, my understanding, Cable One has the direct access for our cable broadcast.
All right, thank you, that's all, thanks.
Julie?
Well, uh, my concern this week is early fireworks, everyone, we've been hearing some early fireworks out there, and I want everybody to hold off, if they could please, and be respectful of our ordinances, so that it doesn't turn into a disaster, and we don't have to reconsider what we're already doing, so, we want everybody to enjoy them, but please follow the rules if at all possible, otherwise, I wanna say, let's all stay healthy and keep wearing our masks, and proper... and keep wearing our masks, and practice our social distancing, so that we don't see a big fight like some of our communities around us are seeing.
Alex?
Yeah, I would echo Julie's comments. Obviously, the ones about wearing a mask and social distancing, that's something I think about on a daily basis. Um, but also about the fireworks, um, I really hope we have a game plan, because I know the mayor has talked about it, well, we've all mentioned it, that, you know, if you're not enforcing anything, if we're not enforcing, and, and I know it's a really tricky, um, situation, because then you get a complaint, and then you go out there, well, who fired it off? What were they doing? You know, all these things. I get it. But, um, if we can have a game plan, and usually the PD is really good about having a game plan, just executing that, I think will be really important, because I know people are frustrated. Some have emailed me wanting to extend it, and others have, um, others have literally the next email will ask for it to be taken away completely. So it's kind of a lose-lose situation. But, um, so yeah, please be respectful of the ordinance, um, because if you continue to violate, then you got to make tough decisions, um, that I don't think anyone wants to make necessarily right now. But, um, the last thing that I would just share, Mayor, is if we can continue to encourage individuals to fill out the census, um, that's really important, especially for the bottom line, being able to, um, use those federal dollars for infrastructure improvement, schools, um, first responders, all different kinds of things. Um, and just really make sure that everyone is getting online, filling it out. It takes less than ten minutes. Honestly, there's also, um, over-the-phone option, where there's a ton of languages represented, and other options as well. So I would just encourage and remind individuals, please complete the census as soon as possible, so that you're counted.
Do you have another citizen?
That's fine.
This is Michael. Sir, could you play, uh, please state your name and address?
Uh, Michael Brandhagen, fourteen twenty-three West First Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I had called on, uh, May eighteenth under council concerns about sidewalks, uh, from Hamilton Boulevard down to Chris Larson Park, and, uh, I just, uh, there is no access from, uh, Triview down to the park, and then from West First on the other end, down to, uh, Chris Larson Park, and I just, uh, never heard back from anyone to make sure that, uh, that concern would be addressed.
Bob, you got to have your engineers tell them what's going on on that, please. Can you get that done this week? We'll get, we'll get you an answer this week.
My guess is it has to do with the road, the twenty-nine construction.
I know, but we got to make sure the sidewalk's in the plans.
Yep.
Okay, tell them we'll let him know this week yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moore?
So, there's no meeting next Monday, because it's the fifth Monday, so we meet back here July sixth. Do we need to be present at the July sixth meeting?
If, available, yes.
Still have the right. If you have health concerns, you can still phone in.
Public can, the public?
Yes, they can. That's one of the deals.
Yes.
That's one of the, that.
Yes, we will be open to the public.
Yes, we'll be open.
Open to the public.
We can leave the chairs spread out like we have, though?
Yes.
Try to do the six-foot.
Yeah.
Social distancing. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Two things. For everybody who asks me what's happening on the Aldi store, if you drove by, they graded this weekend. They're getting ready to build. The other thing is, we've had a few water breaks around town, and downtown's hard enough to get through, and the one at the library broke over a week ago. And if our crews can't do that work to put that pavement back in place, I wish we'd get an emergency bid out and get that thing done, because it's hard to get through the downtown when you're on the single lane.
I think it has been emergency bid, it's just getting the contract all finalized.
Well, we got to have a provision on a deal like that, where they could just do it by the foot and have a blanket going out there. I don't quite understand why we don't, but, okay, I move adjourn.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Amber.
Thanks, everyone.
It's Bob.